Do you want me to start over? I'll start over. Steve Snow, President.
Yeah.
Dina Gergis, First Vice President.
Yeah.
Robert Aguilar, Second Vice President and L Rep. Robert? He's not here? Thought he was here before. Okay. Absent. Alice Locato, Recording Secretary, Present. Inga Smoljar, Treasurer and Brooklyn Borough Appointee.
Present.
Alan Aha, IEP Rep.
Everybody, Present.
Mauricia Caddio. Mauricia, are you unmuted? Are you here? I don't see her. Yifan Chen.
Yeah.
Adele Doyle.
Here.
Vito Labella.
You.
And Simeon Stolzberg, the other Brooklyn Borough President Appointee.
Here.
Thank you, everyone.
Good evening. Welcome to CEC 20's special meeting. Thanks for joining us. I just want to remind everyone that this is a public meeting and it's being recorded. The only people who should share their cameras are the CEC members and our guests. There will be a public speaking session tonight at the end of the meeting. This will be an opportunity for any attendee to ask questions of the council members and make statements. When it's time for public comment, we'll repeat the following instructions to make sure you have an opportunity to speak. First, we'll take questions and comments from participants who signed up using the form. Please press the hand icon on the bottom of the screen to be recognized at that time, or type your name and the word "speak" in all caps into the chat box. When your name is called, please repeat and spell your first and last name before beginning your comment or question. And if you're called in using your phone, dial *9 to raise your hand and Natalia will manually unmute your line to allow you to speak. Those are the public service announcements. So, the agenda tonight is budget. There are a couple of budget administrative items that we need to take care of, and so that's the first item. And so with that, I guess, Inga, do you mind taking the lead on this?
Sure. So I think, you know, last time we met, we had made a motion that we voted on to move funds from Storm Line items into the Equipment Line item in order to purchase laptops, really more for future CEC members to have available to them for use. As of now, that budget has been approved. Everything was submitted and the money has been moved to the line items. What we're looking to do now is to actually vote on putting in the purchase for those laptops. Natalia had basically been able to get a few options for us in terms of the type of laptops and the costs. It's also been made known to us, I think today or yesterday, that apparently there's a backlog in equipment purchases. So we do have to definitely get this in. I believe it was by the 5th of March, if I'm not mistaken. But even if we get it in by the 5th of March, it's not guaranteed that we will actually be able to make the purchase, given the backlog. I think, you know, from my perspective, I would suggest that we go ahead and still vote on this and try to purchase these laptops as we've discussed in prior meetings. I don't know if we want to open this point up to discussion, Steve, or if, you know, we should just try to move ahead as discussed in the past and make the motion to do the purchase.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can have a few comments, but just a, you know, a few. And I am, I would like to channel some of Steve Weiser's sort of meeting management from our meeting we just had with him. And I'd like people to put their hands up in the chat and I'll call on them. I think that works well. So Alice, please, go ahead.
So, I'm a broken record. 2,000 children in District 20 still do not have devices. And an email came through that said, apparently, we will be able to use any devices we buy to distribute to children. Now, that language was the first I had heard of it. I'm all for buying the devices, but with that in mind, I think that we should get the most bang for our buck for the $11,000 and get as many devices as we can. And if it turns out that we can donate them to students, I think that we should do that. 2,000 students out of 39 in District 20 don't have any devices. That is 5%. That is outrageous. That's all.
Well, no, I'd like to, Alice, I'd like to just sort of discuss it because what, the email you got, can you just say again?
Pull it up now, but I mean, and I know that we talked about it for being for CEC members and the money's moved and I'm all for buying the devices. I'm just thinking, you know.
Yeah, I get it, yeah.
You know.
Like, how certain was the, that's what I want to know is how certain.
But if anyone else has any insight, I'm pulling it up right now.
This email sent to all CEC members?
It might have been an ECC update, but let me pull it up because I read it.
And then I see after Alice, so I think I saw, I'm sorry, I think Inga, oh, Inga, you're speaking right now, that's fine. And then Dina is up.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Do we know, one, can we buy tablets? Because that's what mostly kids are using with this funding. And is there a backlog on the tablets as well? Or is it just the laptops?
Natalia, do you have any, did you get any more color on that on the?
I didn't even know about this email, so I have no idea.
It is from the CCEC, what, budget? CCEC Budget and Other Important Information. It is from the ECC Steering Committee. It went out on Sunday. So it says, number one action item, CCEC Budget. We are working on a mechanism to allow councils to purchase equipment and supplies to be distributed to students in need. FACE will share detailed guidance by March 1st. While we are not 100% sure what we can do with our budgets until the FACE guidance is released, we do want your councils to mark the important dates, which we already know, the March 5th deadline to purchase equipment and the March 12th deadline to change any budget line items. But if you're going to change a budget line item and you want to do equipment, you have to have that done by March 5th, which we've already done. We've accomplished that. We're ahead of the game. So basically saying FACE is going to issue guidance. And I guess we have options. There's already a backlog. We could wait until that guidance comes out on March 1st. But then we won't, we'll have to call another special meeting. I mean, I say we just vote here to order as many as we can.
Yeah, it sounds like, Alice, I think what you're saying is instead of sort of focusing on higher quality ones, we.
Exactly. Just get people connected. And if there's a backlog, there's a backlog. But, you know, at this point, 2,000 children haven't been to school all year. Oh, my gosh. Okay. That's it, done.
Steve, can you actually comment? I see you put in the chat. And can you just provide any, your sort of latest knowledge of this?
He says he's going to follow up.
Okay.
Yeah, let me see.
Okay, that's.
I assume the ECC has been talking about it.
Yeah.
With my Deputy Chancellor. So let me see where it's at.
I think, isn't that what their survey was all about? So, I mean, I think they're ferociously working on it, so.
Okay. Inga, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I mean, I wanted to add a, I think, you know, for the past year, we've been trying to find ways to use the funds that we have to help the community, mainly the kids in the schools. So I'm all for, you know, giving it to them. I think, though, given the deadlines and the dates, I probably would go ahead and order the laptops. And then if we're able to donate, then we can donate them. You know, I would rather not wait till March 1st or 2nd.
No, I agree. I, and so, but there were a couple, I think there was a $384 laptop, right? So we could get a lot more of those with the 11,000 than we could the higher-end laptops.
Go ahead, Steve.
I mean, I guess it is a question, you know, and one of the things we often hear from, we hear back from parents and schools is some of the laptops purchased are not the best quality. And so do we want to, do we want to focus on quality or quantity here? That's one, one way to look at it. And the good thing about the higher quality ones is longer life. They could be repurposed, perhaps. Although if we give them to, if we give them to families, they're gone. That's a gift. That's not coming back to the CEC. That's just, yeah, so.
But Steve has, Steve W. has made clear that the CEC laptops will be tracked and you will have to give it back. And there's no keepsies on those, so.
Is there, I'm sorry, did I miss, is there a question of where, who these will actually go to for equity's sake? And is that, are we able to, you know?
TB.
Is there fairness to be considered in that? You know, can we give it to a particular program? Students in temporary housing? Is there some, someplace in particular? Throwing them out into the.
Well, I don't want to throw them out. I was thinking.
No, I mean, not throw them, throw them out into the atmosphere and, you know, see where they land as opposed to dedicating them to a particular population.
Well, that's where we work with it, right? Because it's not our business who's in what. And so we need to work with our PTAs and our President's Council and the district. And they need to be telling us where to give them, if we even are able to, according to FACE.
So, and I guess if I may, maybe just for the purpose of this point and moving it forward, I mean, would it make sense, Natalia, do you have the list of options again? Maybe we can let the council members know what the options were for the laptops. And then we can decide, you know, which ones we should get. I think we're not going to know if we can donate them now anyway. So I think it's a bit too soon to really discuss how they're going to be distributed. I think what we need to determine here is just, you know, make the motion to actually purchase some. And so maybe we can just move on to determine, you know, which ones we want to get.
So do we need to make a motion about which one specifically? Is that required?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Um, another consideration, too, is that if we don't, if we do go with the lower end and then they do allow us to donate money to students in temporary housing, we would still be able to do that budget line item on our March 10th meeting. So if there was extra money left over in equipment, we would be able to flip that and actually donate it to the STH if that decision comes down, which let's face it, they should have told us already. It's all very up in the air, but just putting it out.
Yeah, I mean, aren't we, I think we're just going to try and max out the 11,000 on technology, on devices, right? So I don't.
We're going to buy them for ourselves. Okay.
Yeah.
I thought we were.
Well, yeah, that's.
Okay, so, so I guess just looking at what Natalia's put on the screen, there's a number of Chromebooks that are under, I guess, the $500 mark. They all, they all look a bit dated. You know, I'll just speak from my personal opinion. I am not familiar with Chromebooks, but, you know, from what I've heard, children that have been using them or getting them from the, you know, DOE, not been good experiences. So that, you know, that's just obviously anecdotal. Can we just move further down and just see all the choices? Then we have, I guess, MacBook Pros. Okay, those, some of those are quite expensive. I'll just, you know, throw in my two cents again. I actually have the 13-inch one, the most affordable one. That is why I got that one as well. It was the cheapest one. And I, you know, I found it, I find it to be very useful. My kids actually also use it for school sometimes. They actually use my laptop. And it actually has been very easy for them to use. So I can just, you know, give that as an example. And then is there anything further or were these all the choices, Natalia?
Actually, Inga, can you go back up to the processor for the cheaper models? I'm just curious what the processor is on them.
4 gig. Chrome OS.
Yeah, I don't know. And that was just copy and pasted directly from Shop DOE.
I find that the processors usually on Shop DOE are a little outdated or, you know, on the verge of on their way out. But, you know, Chromebooks are Chromebooks. You're not looking to, you know, program, do programming.
I guess, should we, I think we should identify one of the lower-priced models. And then I think on the higher-priced ones, the 13-inch MacBook Air, 876 bucks. I think that probably makes the most sense. Would we agree? And then we should take a vote on which, which one to purchase.
Yeah.
I like the touch on the Chrome. And if you're going to do a Chromebook, you have to do a touch. MacBook Air doesn't have a touch, which gets annoying. Sorry, Inga. I, you know, I've had both. You're muted, Alice.
Thinking about, and I don't know this because my daughter also uses my, my MacBook, but, um, isn't Chromebook like, isn't it PC? Aren't those a lot of the programs that especially the younger kids are being told to be on?
Google Classroom.
Yeah, so, I mean, I know that they're not great.
They're very, they're very intuitive to what they're trying to accomplish. And it doesn't require, they don't have to purchase additional software programs. Google has all of the software programs that they need, so.
But Apple, you know, MacBooks are a lot less likely to have bugs. I don't know. It depends on, so if we go with the eight, the 876 times 11 lap, laptops, that's $9,636. We have 11,000 in the line item. Are there taxes and fees? Is it like shopping in a store, Natalia? Or is that just the flat price?
Muted.
Usually that's just the flat price.
I would think so. So we would still have some play. What?
There shouldn't be tents.
Right. I'm just wondering, you know, fees, processing, I don't know.
Tax exempt, yes.
Got tax exempt, yes. Yeah, I mean, I think technically you're buying it from the DOE shop, so it's already purchased.
And how about, how about on the, on the lower, on the Chrome, which Chromebook do we want to?
So we want to look at the best one, right? Let's do the math there. That would be like the.
Not much of a difference.
Years ago. The 4 gigabyte?
It's only a $10 difference.
Should we, well, let's get the touch one, right? The Acer.
14-inch screen and 11-inch screen. That's the difference. And then although 14-inch becomes a cumbersome for students.
Okay. So $11,000 divided by, I'm going to round it.
370.
All right, I use 360. I can do 370. Is, we can buy 29 and three-quarter Chromebook.
I'm sorry, although the model is from the 14 inches from 2020, it's the latest model. I don't know if we want to go, but the 14-inch does become problematic to deal with. I don't know if it's good for small hands.
Looks like if we spend the $10 less than we get the 14-inch, we would be able to do a round number of 30 Chromebooks. Which is 11 for CC and 19 for students. Or if anyone wanted to not have their, you know, if anyone who is elected next term decides to not collect theirs, that's fine, too. They don't have to. And then there would be that many more.
Okay, I had my hand up. I got lost in the shuffle. I can just speak on that.
Yeah, go ahead, Vito.
Well, thank you. So the only reason that I suggested that we all get Chromebooks is to, i- is to just give people the opportunity, just, just to take away the excuse for people not being remote, right? I would think that if we could achieve the same thing by putting in our bylaws that, you know, all, all meetings may be attended either remotely or in person and the setup, the voting requirements. That's something we're supposed to do anyway because, because they think that Zooming is going to be the future. So to Alice's point, I think most people would mind, would not mind using their own laptop. So if we had this thing in here that we're all remote, we can use our laptops, I think that that's more, we don't necessarily have to buy the biggest and best laptops. For us, we just have a few laptops, Chromebooks even, that we could give if somebody, for whatever reason, wants to have a CEC laptop and not have, you know, commingling of their personal stuff and their CEC stuff. So, so I was agreeing with Alice in kind of a long-winded way.
I love when you agree with me, Vito. And I'll add, too, that the DOE laptops are probably going to have limitations in terms of what you can use them for anyway. So, you know, I don't know how many adults want to use a devoted CEC laptop, never be able to go on their work email or anything, but.
Okay. I mean, does anyone else maybe have any thoughts on these? I'm honestly, I'm indifferent. I just, I think we need to use our funds. I think we need to get the equipment. And obviously, if we can donate, I agree, we should donate. Does anyone feel strongly about the MacBooks instead of the Chrome? Okay.
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Alice. Yeah.
Hi, Inga. I, so I want to ask again, Alice, you were doing some math. So what, so how many can we get for the kids?
Okay, so if we go with the more expensive model, the 11.6, which is a touchscreen, that's about 370. We can get just under 30. If we go for the one that's 358, 38, the 14-inch screen, which doesn't look like it is a touch, then we can get 30.69, so we can get 30. So we can get 29 or 30. I don't think it matters. I don't think we should get the nine-year-old laptop. I think that's it. Not a good idea. But, I mean, I like round numbers. I like 30, but maybe the touchscreen is important. But it also looks like the 14-inch comes with touchscreens. Natalia just can't access the website right now, probably because everyone is trying to buy equipment. But I don't know much about tech. Dean is piping up. She probably knows. Here we go.
2019.
There you go. Touch.
The 11, the 11-inch or is that the, is that the 11?
The one that says it has a touch.
Yeah. 11.6.
The children have varying fine.
I agree. Let's do.
Okay, so let's, I'm going to make a motion then, unless someone else wants to discuss further. Okay. I'm going to make a motion to purchase the 11.6-inch touch Chromebook for 369.73 in an amount to, you know, to max out the line item in our budget. So whether that's 30 or 29, whatever that comes out to.
It looks like 29 will equal $10,722.17. I second that motion, Inga.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi. Can we do a roll call because this is a budget?
Yeah, I was just going to say the probably best to roll call for that.
Okay.
All right, Steve Snow.
Yes.
Okay, Dina Gergis.
Yep, yes.
Robert Aguilar, who's absent. Alice Locato.
Yes.
Inga Smoljar.
Yes.
Alan Aha.
The.
What?
Yes, of course, Claro que sí.
Remember, my Spanish is from back how many years ago? I'm not that good at it. Mauricia?
Yes.
Okay. Yifan Chen?
Yeah.
Okay, Adele Doyle?
Yes, yes.
Vito Labella?
Yep.
Sorry, Simeon Stolzberg?
Yes.
Okay, great. The motion passes. Now, has anyone thought to how these will be distributed?
I think we can, let's deal with that later.
Okay.
That's okay. Natalia, you mean the issue we were emailing about today with like, where do we store them until they get?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's deal with that later. I think we can figure that out when the time comes.
Okay.
Inga, was there anything else on the budget? I think.
I, I think that was all. That was the main, yeah, point to get across.
Great. I've been asked to make a quick announcement on CEC elections.
Quickly, is there any new information about purchasing services? That was something I thought you were going to look into.
Yeah, well, and Steve Weiser talked about that in the last meet, in our meeting just now. And he specifically referred to the survey services. And he said that they're looking into it and he's waiting on a response from legal. And then we also, we exchanged emails with the grants officer, sort of a separate communication channel. And that also came back with, okay, let's get more information and then we can, and then we can come back to it or something. So, so yes, and there's communications underway on a couple of different fronts.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Just a reminder to everyone on the call that the CEC elections are, the process is started and I'm just going to pull up the exact, I'm sure some of you know this off the top of your heads, but I think the deadline is the 28th, although I think, yeah, and it's right on the main page of the CEC, of the DOE, I should say, the link to run for the election. You just need a New York, New York student account. And that's really the extent of what I can think is immediately just get your, complete your application or get it in by the 28th, I think is the, the most important thing.
We talk about how exciting it is that it's going to be every parent in New York City can vote. So even if you're not running, we should all be voting? That's exciting.
Only parents with children in DOE schools?
Yes, yes, parents of DOE children, I'm sorry.
And Alice, one per family?
One, it's 1 million people able to vote for this as opposed to three from each PTA for the entire time there have been CECs. So it's, it's exciting and it's democratic and yay.
But it's, it's not really because it's one vote per child per family.
Right, but there are a million children in the, right?
Yeah, right, but.
Not for our district, but 39,000 votes will be able to be cast for District 20 as opposed to 132 before, Vito. I mean, it's a big difference. So everything.
They could have even gone further. They could have even gone further and make, you know, every.
If we were a real school board, yeah. But yeah, sorry, Steve. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Natalia, do you have the social media draft policies available? Can you pull those up? Sorry to put you on the spot. And I guess I'll, I'll just sort of, while she's pulling it up, my, my goal for this tonight is really just a feedback session. And I would like to, if we're still debate, if we're still discussing it at 8:30, I'd like to cut off debate at that point and cut off debate at that point on this particular issue. But basically what I would like to do, and for this one, I, I really would like to hold to an order. And I would really like to get sort of each member who wants to speak on it, who's had a chance to look at it, to sort of just share their impressions. And I'd like to go in order. I'd like people to please raise their hand and be recognized and, and sort of share feedback. Hopefully constructive feedback that we can, that we can take, that the social media committee can take and potentially incorporate into what we've prepared. And so Natalia's got it posted. And so if there's, I guess I'll sort of quickly walk through the genesis of this document. The Social Media Committee looked at a couple of other CECs. We took some language that we liked. We took some policies that we liked. We wrote some of our own. And the goal is really to create a framework around social media usage on the CEC. And it sort of touches on some key areas, administration of different social media accounts, content decision, how content is approved or not approved for posting on CEC social media. And then there's a section on, on monitoring of social media platforms, just laying out the guidelines for how that should work. And then there's a section on individual sort of social media responsibilities, best practices. We borrowed from the New York City DOE social media guidelines for that. And then lastly, there's a waiver that we're proposing is posted on any social media platform. We've indicated the only, the two active ones we have now are Facebook and Twitter. But it's basically a waiver, you know, just stating that the information on this platform is, does not necessarily represent the view of the CEC itself, which I think is a. Which I think is um, a, again, sort of a, a, a good way to go when you've got a platform with lots of different contributors on it. So I guess what I'd like to do is yeah, if we can just go in order and um, I'm happy to, is anyone in the chat ready to speak or want to speak on this at this point? I'll wait for a hand. Vito, you, were you indicating you wanted to speak on it or no?
Negative, that was before. Does my hand still up?
No, it's fine. I'm just looking at the chat and I just see, but anyway. So anyone who'd like to speak?
I can't figure out my hand on the chat, but
Go ahead.
Couple of thoughts. So all this, going down through the list, I'm still not clear on what the difference is between policy and politics. So I can understand if a political official sends out an announcement trying to get themselves elected, that's clearly politics. But you know, there are a lot of things that politicians might be advocating for in a statement that we as a C E C might not approve of and not support. And so I guess the question is, are we going to allow any elected official to basically use our social media platform to communicate with the public about their pet issues if they are considered policy and related to um, education or children? That's one issue. The second issue is sort of this idea of having three people on the council being able to basically pick and choose what is going to get, uh, allowed onto our social media. Um, and, and how we're gonna be able to use that in a way that's fair and isn't censoring certain ideologies or positions or arguments or discussion. And so it seems to me I'd be sort of more in favor of being very open or very closed, but the sort of middle ground leaves it open to me to allowing a minority of people on the council to sort of pick and choose what is going to be presented through our social media.
May I?
Uh, yeah, go ahead, Vito.
I, I, I don't know what happened to my hand. I agree with Simeon, my hand's gone. Um, so I apologize, but I actually since we drafted this, I actually agree with Simeon in the sense that let's take for argument's sake, something that Nicole might put out, that she's an elected official in District Twenty, right? And that might not be something that everybody. Alice, please.
Congresswoman Malio Takas. Who's Nicole though, Vito?
I'm using general.
I know.
Something Vito might put out, right?
Councilmember La Bella?
Yeah, maybe. That's an announcement, right? No, it's not. Um, so anyway, something that one person, one elected official might put out that everyone would disagree with, it's an official position, and something that another elected official from the same district might put out that of the other portion of the council might disagree with. So um, I don't know how to agree to, 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 to go to Simeon's point, I don't know how to fix that. Um, I don't know what makes a um a statement by an individual, even an elected official within our district, um, worthy of going up, right? I mean, I, I don't, I don't know if there's an easy answer. Go ahead, Alice.
Sorry, okay, um, I, I didn't mean to cut you off, Vito. I'm just always really conscious about the fact that everyone might not know what we're talking about, and I try to make it as, you know, easy as possible.
I was talking.
Nicole is. Congresswoman Malio Takas, yeah.
I wasn't necessarily referring to her. I was referring to an unnamed elected official.
Okay. I digress. Okay, so I have an idea about what Simeon was talking about pursuant to the outline that you guys have where it's um treasurer, president, reporting secretary, which right now would be Steve, Inga and myself. And another option that he had posed on the email was either the entire council, which I think might get us bogged down. And um, I only say that is because people have different time constraints and, and getting a reasonably quick answer is a challenge. And I like what we kind of settled on the email that if no one pipes up within twenty four hours, okay, but that's, you know, just for the time being until we can figure it out. Another option besides having it be all the officers would be having it be four officers. And if four reasonable people can't come to a decision, um, and right now the way that goes, it would fall along ideological lines. Obviously, the next C E C won't even have a social media committee until they form one. So it's a moot point, right? It would only really apply for our council. And I think everyone can agree that, I mean, maybe Robert's not here, let's opt him out. If Dean is willing, I'm willing. And if the four of us, who I feel like we, two of us fall on one side, I mean, for some things, I feel like I can agree with all of you on some things, right? And then maybe if we can't come to an agreement, then we forward it on to the larger group if it's something scandalous. But I want to say something about the statement thing. I have never for, at a C E C meeting even had a statement from a politician be an issue unless we were having a topic on a, a discussion on a specific topic and we invited them, and then they might be reading a statement on that topic. I think what we should absolutely be posting are things like Andrew Granadas having um, a, a town hall on participatory, on participatory budgeting, on things that affect our community while not maybe directly affecting quote unquote education. They still have to do with, you know, Bensonhurst, Bath Beach, Gravesend, all of where our schools are, Bay Ridge. I think those things are not statements from politicians. They are what your elected officials are doing for their citizens and as elected officials. And we want to share that information with the citizens that sit through our meetings patiently for public speaking time. So um just two ideas. I don't think the statement thing is gonna come up that much. And I think we should be sharing every single elected official in all of our neighborhoods, which is, you know, almost the border of Kensington too. You know, inviting all of our electeds at all times, and if they're having town halls or things that help the community, let's, let's put that up. Let's do it.
Um, Steve?
Can I just give a quick, I just want to quickly clarify with Alice and then you can go Adele. Alice, when, when you say the statement thing, you're referring to the thirds of bullet, right?
Right, like how we had the, the, the resolution on gift and talented in January and Assemblyman and Body, I think Reddit or Irene read a statement for him. Things like that's a statement on an issue. I, I think that they don't offer them to us unless we ask for them, and then no, I think they should just be read at the record in the meetings. I don't think we should be posting that on our it, it's not, it doesn't help the community one way or the other. I mean, these elected officials, they have town halls all the time. They have information sessions. Those are the kinds of things that I think are completely you know, without controversy. Let's inform our community. So we have followers.
Adele was next.
So we, we had tossed this around a bit, uh, and actually I just forwarded something to Steve today. Uh, it came from uh, the mayor's office, uh, task force on hate crimes. And it was about um, an uptick in hate crimes against Asians and uh, what are we doing about, what they're doing about this? And I said, is this something we would want to post to Facebook? However, it's, it's a slippery slope. Um, i- i- if, if, if it's not directly tied to education, we start you know, there, there starts to become an ideological point of view, not, not, not related to this specific instance, but I'm sure any one of us in our, in our own ideological ways can point to something that we don't agree with from across the aisle that we wouldn't want to see posted. And yet, if we're in, 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 in fairness and equity, what would we want, I'm not sure what stack means. Um, uh, uh, what would we, in other words, what, what are the dangers by allowing a carte blanche posting of um, a constituency, uh, constituent events? What could potentially happen as Malio Takas, what, what happened when she is posting particular items or particular events going on that are representative of her constituency versus someone else? And that's why I agreed with Steve on this. I agree if we keep it very clearly about education. And it's not to discount anything else, it's just to put it through a more rigorous vetting process. And I don't think that we can leave it to four people because there is an imbalance, a potential imbalance. I think leaving it out there for everyone to voice is more equitable. And if there is disagreement, then if we're looking for equity, it's the same thing you had said previously about, you know, whether or not six people vote for a resolution or five people vote for a resolution. That's not really, you know, is that, is that a mandate of a consensus? No. Um, so maybe it's something that we need to discuss more. So it's not that we're discounting these, we're just saying it needs to go through more of a rigorous vetting process. Doesn't automatically go through it in my, in obviously what Steve, Vito and I were thinking at the time when we created this. Because you know, yeah, I'm su- I'm, I'm sure politicians are going to do things. And I actually brought up the Brett, the food bank. Uh, it's a great thing. What, what do we do with this? It would have to go to, it would have to go to the council because of the potential slippery slope of other items. And, and yeah, in and of itself, it's a beautiful thing, but because of the potential slippery slope of whoever happens, the checks and balances which need to be in place, whichever council happens to be here next, we would want to see this.
Them. I gotta make that clear. This won't apply to that. There won't be a social media committee on.
Okay, alright, well, i- i- it, it will be in the bylaws though.
No, it won't. There is no social media committee. We formed, we have.
This is, this we're looking to put in the bylaws.
Yes, that's the whole purpose, Alice. Let me just jump in. The whole purpose is to get this.
Into. Yes. Well, I won't, I, I, I think, I think, oh, whatever. I mean, let's, sorry, I didn't realize that was the purpose. Thank you.
I wanna, I wanna keep getting opinions here. I think Alan's next, so.
I agree with Alice. This has, I don't think this should go into the bylaws by any means. And I think part of, if I'm just gonna be frank, I think that we should, we're making decisions for the next council in a way, and I, I, I can't support that. That's the sort of where, where I am when I'm reading this. But in terms of the, you know, the politics part, you know, if there is a, a statement that speaks to uh, to hate crimes, absolutely, the, the function of education is to create the most open, inclusive space possible. And when we're talking about people being targeted by a basis of their religion or their the race or their, their, their gender identity, I think it's absolutely within our purview to, to put statements out that letting the, 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 the community know. Um, you know, a few weeks ago, we received a, the Black Lives Matter at school flyer, Natalia did, right? And, and and, and I, we, we had an exchange on this on email. Um, and um, and I, I learned that schools in our district participated in it and teachers had students come to it because they saw that culturally relevant curricula, which centers the black experience, was necessary to create this, you know, this multicultural a, a classroom that, um, that speaks to, to, you know, the, I, I don't like the term tolerance, that, but that speaks to inclu- inclusivity. And we decided that we weren't going to post that on our web, on our Facebook page, even though other C E Cs did. So does that become political when the, the, the function of education itself? Uh, you know, it's demanding that we respond to that. In other words, I guess back to Simeon and Alice's point, that context matters. Um, and, and so I, I would just like to, like, I, I feel like by we're, we're making decisions, A, for the next council, but we're also sort of uh, drawing a line of what counts and what doesn't in ways that I, I think are a bit contradictory. So tho- those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Yes, Steve, just to remind the council, um, we made that decision when we did the, uh, when we input into our bylaws, um, the code of conduct. We made that decision for future, for a future, um, for future councils.
Yeah, we can, we can have that, that discussion will come later, but yeah, I um, I think I see, uh, Inga, I think you were next, and then Yifan.
Yeah, thanks. Um, yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, the, the whole purpose of even, in my opinion, uh, you know, the social uh, media committee is, stems from the difficulty we've had as a council, not just this year, but even last year in the deciding what to post and what not to post. And, and I think actually it would be very helpful for future council members for for this to be in the bylaws, uh, maybe not in this forum. Um, but you know, it will just be helpful for them and, and help them to really not spend their time on these types of things and, and focus more on helping the community. You know, in other avenues as opposed to spending many hours discussing what should or should not be posted. Um, in terms of what's written here, I mean, I think what I'm seeing on the screen and apologies, I, I, I can't see the whole thing, but you know, the for the no approval required, to me, it's very clear. Those first two points, it, it should be clear, like we should be able to post that. The A A should just be able to post that. Um, and that's something that's very clear and simple right now, I think to me and probably to all of us. But I can tell you over the past year or two, I don't think it was that clear cut, right? Everyone's like, well, should we post it? Shouldn't we post it? So I, I think like those points would be very helpful to just put in the bylaws. Um, you know, that third point on elected officials, I kind of agree. It can be here, there, it's a slippery slope. You know, maybe on that one, may, maybe that's not one of those points that, you know, we should just say no approval required. Uh, maybe that is something that, you know, if someone feels very strongly posting something that's coming from an elected official, then that should warrant maybe more discussion and the future councils feel that they want to spend time on that, then, then they should have that option. Um, that's just my two cents.
Thank you, Inga. Yifan?
Yeah, so basically I think Inga summarized really well, and I, I agree with both Adele and Inga. Uh, another thing I really want to point out is that, you know, like, for this council, for some of, I won't mention the name, let's not use double standard. Like back last summer, when you know, like earlier this year, you know, when hate language of, you know, like anti-Asian, anti-Chinese is being posted on, you know, Bay Ridge and Dago Heights on the lamppost everywhere. I mean, I, you know, I suggested, you know, like, maybe we add this to one of resolutions. And I don't know, like, I think it's the person um, who just spoke, right? Refused, right, to, 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 to agree to that. And then like, it's like he basically voted down, right? So now, now let's look at it. Look at the newspaper and look at like the recent news, like how many like anti-Asian, anti-Chinese, anti-Korean, like hate crimes has been going on in the city, right? Let's not use double standard here. I, I, I don't like double standard. This is hypocrisy. That's all I need to say.
Um, I just remind everyone, I completely agree with these issues and how intense they are. Let's keep it on issues and not people, please. Can I, um, I think Alice, it looks like you are, did you want to speak, Alice?
Only if I'm next.
Yep, you are.
Everyone to have an opportunity. I know I speak a lot. Okay. So the slippery slope thing, I failed to, okay, so I'm, I'm gonna start at the beginning. What is the purpose of social media? To engage the community. How many followers do we have on Facebook? Hardly any. How many do we have on Instagram? Less. How many do we have on Twitter? Even less than that. The reason that we don't have any followers is we don't not do, we don't post anything that is relevant or interesting or engaging with the community. The way to engage on social media is to engage. And that means, I mean, I, uh, Steve, when you were talking about survey before, um, I had like a, an epiphany, we should just do like an Instagram story survey. We'd get like a lot of answers if we had engagement on our Instagram page. And we would, I mean, it's not quantifiable data, but if you had four hundred parents answer yes or no to a certain question, you'd have, anyway, so I digress. But the point of social media is to have engagement. If we are posting four things every six weeks because no one can decide, then I, I think we get to a, a point where why do we even have a social media policy? Now, I'm gonna talk about the bylaws. The reason we even put social media in the code of conduct is because we were trying to figure out how to represent our personal opinions on the C E C page without looking like we were speaking for the C E C. This was a really important thing. The only thing that I think we ever came up with was that you, every time you comment, you should say something like, these opinions are my own, or something to that effect in the beginning of the thread, maybe. So let's remember why we started talking about the social media policy in the first place. I think it's a huge mistake personally to put it in the bylaws and take choice of it. We can, I'm all for making recommendations. Uh, let's remind people what making changes to the bylaws means. It means you need to present the entire perfect language at one meeting to the public and then vote on it at the next calendar meeting. So the earliest these changes would be in effect is in April. Um, and that's the earliest. That's assuming we don't argue or go back and forth or whatever. I mean, okay, let's say it's May. Do we really want to set these things in stone for the twelve people who are being voted on by, by the way, thirty six thousand parents as opposed to a hundred and thirty two parents? Do we feel like we represent the community well enough to make these decisions? Now, the last thing I'll say is, um, there's a difference between Congresswoman Malio Takas having a town hall about how she feels property taxes are too high and Congresswoman Malio Takas having a town hall about, I mentioned it before, participatory budgeting or or, um, making a post because she had something on her website about a food bank open in Staten Island. I mean, these are all things that serve our community and we are doing a disservice by not including it. Um, and so I'll just repeat the fact that in terms of we, it's a big commitment to make a change to the bylaws and if we wanted to, I agree, everything from the DOE, I agree with the AA approval thing. But anything that we question, I'm fine with giving it to the whole council. I just know from experience that it's hard to get um, 11 adults all talking about the same thing on the same page. And I'm just one final thing to keep in mind, and I hope that Natalia, who is amazing at her job and amazing to us, stays on forever. But there is a chance that, um, a council cannot have an administrative assistant. That is, uh, unfortunately, a very common thing among, uh, councils. So putting something in the bylaw that puts so much on the AA in the event that something would happen, and I hope it never does, or that Natalia gets a great, you know, raise and moves on to something amazing. But in the event, then you're gonna have to be making a whole different set of decisions. So to summarize, I agree with guidelines. I don't think it should be this controversial. And, um, also, I just wanna speak to that resolution thing. My memory was, it was about one thing, which was George Floyd, maybe. And we wanted to do a separate one about anti-Asian discrimination, which I think we should try to do for the March meeting. The uptick in violence against the Asian community has been increasing and it's been scary and it's terrible and I agree. So let's do that resolution. Let's do all the resolutions we want. We, but we shouldn't water down an anti-Asian discrimination message with another message, their, their own messages. Alice out.
Uh, Simeon, I think you were up next and then Inga.
So I, I just wanna be clear about what this proposal is, which is to basically give two out of three of the officers the power to decide what goes up on social media. And the way the language is written, it says, they get to decide if a parent posts something and those two people don't like it, they can take it down or prevent it from being posted. And they can choose if they feel like it to refer it to the whole council. It doesn't say that, that it, it has to be. I mean, so it's giving a lot of power of the whole council to two people. And it's not clear to me that that's a good idea, um, that those two people could have an ideological bent on some issues and keep that from being presented, or they could say, we're not gonna allow parents who have complaints to post anything on our website. And so that, again, it's really shutting down any of the dialogue. We've had this before. Every time parents start to express themselves, some people get uncomfortable and then say, well, we shouldn't be posting that, or it's too personal, or things like that. We should have clear policies about ad hominem attacks and things like that. But allowing two people on the council to essentially get to decide who gets to post what and whether or not they get to post at all, I don't think is a good idea.
Yeah, I've, uh, I mean, I think we, we've made clear, the committees made clear, this is just a draft and it's very much open for discussion. And I, I think I, I've indicated an email that I've rethought that three people thing too, so. Go ahead, Inga.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, um, I guess, you know, just on this point that Simeon just brought up. I, if I wasn't clear before, I, I kind of agree. Uh, again, I, I think it's useful. I think it will be useful, as I mentioned before, to actually put in the bylaws, clear guidelines for, for things that we all agree are very clear-cut, non-controversial. Um, so that just everyone knows, look, this, it, you know, comes in, just post it. For other things, I, I think it warrants, you know, council discussion. I, I, I don't think, you know, it should be in the hands of a handful of council members. Um, so I agree with that. I, I did wanna make one other point, this concept of engagement. And, and, um, saying that we're not engaged because we're not, we, with our community, because we don't have, you know, any followers on Instagram or Facebook. I mean, one of my, I guess, biggest, um, I don't know if it's not really issues, but, but one thing I, I had a lot of difficulty with this year, particularly, particularly on Facebook and, and all this social media accounts when it comes, um, to people, you know, commenting on our policies in our district, in our schools. I don't know if these parents are parents in our district or parents of children in our district. And so for me, this concept of engaging with parents in our district, um, based on comments on social media, you know, I don't currently really subscribe to that, um, because I don't know if these parents truly are parents of children in our district. Um, I can tell you in, like, my, my school's PTA meetings, you know, they will, they, you have to register and they have to allow you to come into that PTA meeting because they first confirm that you're actually a parent of a child in that school. Um, so I just wanted to point that out. You know, I think there's definitely a place for social media and for engagement. But, you know, to use commentary there to, you know, focus our, um, our attentions as a CC, given that we don't really know if those comments are truly from parents of our district, that, you know, I, I would probably question that. That's going a little off topic. I know, I'm sorry, Steve.
Okay. Um, okay, we are now, I'm just gonna look through and see if there are any more hands. I don't see any more hands from council members. And yeah, and it's about, it's eight thirty, so I, I think this has been great, everyone, and I really appreciate all the comments. And I think it gives us, I, I'm just gonna share sort of some of my observations that I think I'll take back and that'll guide my thinking with, when the social media committee meets next is, uh, sort of two big ones for me is I think it really makes sense to have approval for the whole council. I'm completely on board with that. And so I'll talk to, you know, Vito and Adele and I will sort of discuss that one, but I think that makes a lot of sense for anything that has to be approved. Um, and I think probably politics for now should be moved to that approval category, but again, we'll, we'll sort of.
When you say whole council, do you mean quorum or do you mean two-thirds? Quorum is the same line that we're already.
Quorum.
Rattling.
Six, right?
Well, I mean, there are certain things in Robert's rules that do require two-thirds, so, I, I mean.
Thinking quorum, but again.
The same guidelines. I don't, I mean, at that point, I don't see what the difference is, then we would just have you and Inga and I. And then what, what we don't agree on, we don't agree on. I mean, for this council, assuming they don't make it into the bylaws, but.
Something to think about is whether things need positive approval to go up or negative approval to be taken down, sort of. You know, there are two different ways to look at it. One is to open gates and then remove things if the whole council votes on it and decides.
Yep, understood, Simeon.
Steve, um, just, just two points, just so the clarification, so, and nobody thinks that we're, we're shoving anything then down anybody's throat. Um, you know, pos- councils make policy all the way up until the end of their i- i- it is a practice of councils to review bylaws in the first or second meeting of their new term. And they have the right to remove anything that occurs, but they also have the right to have the value of our experience to understand the things that we've gone through, so they don't go over the same things. Um, but they have the right to change these things, but to say that we're not going to make any policy up until the, you know, because we're, we're leaving, it would suggest that, well, we're not gonna do anything else. So, um, I really think this is really important. I really think that it's necessary to be in bylaws because of the problems we've had. I think we're open to certain, um, issues. Um, uh, there's section two thirty, there's, um, there's, um, who is, who is, who is, um, overseeing the, the discussions? And we need to provide protections for our council members, which, uh, gives them a little bit more parameters for, for this. But, uh, you know, nothing's set in stone. Simeon, you had a point, you know, it shouldn't be two people. I, I really worry about one ideology overtaking another. Equity, I think, is always very important. And we have a fair representation of all views. So, you know, anything we can do, but I really think something should be in our bylaws. Thank you.
And I will, uh, actually, Alan, go ahead. You can, I think Alan is next.
I, I think Alice was right before me. I saw, she said one more point in the chat.
Yeah, go ahead, Alice.
Um, okay, you know what? Never mind. I'm gonna, I'm gonna yield my time to Alan.
Okay.
No, I, I have a, a, just a question in relation to what's permitted in terms of content. We had a really terrific special at IEP meeting Monday. Thank you, Stephen and, uh, Alice, Simeon, Vito. I, uh, Rob was, yeah, and everyone who came, and I know we only have sixteen participants tonight, so thank you to everybody. And Stephen, we used that, you know, we, we engaged over email on this, but I used this Padlet, which is this really awesome tool, which allowed parents to express themselves anonymously, um, which is very different than doing so in the chat. It's, I'm actually really glad it's open tonight. That's awesome. Um, and it's very different than commenting on our Facebook page where people post and you see their names. Uh, and I did that on purpose so that we could identify issues for agenda setting. And then Alice and Simeon did a, a great job of, of sort of, uh, using that, um, that wall that people created where parents put their concerns and they said, you know, they wanted us, they basically held us to task and said, these are the issues that are happening with disability, disability communities, IEPs and D75 and so forth. And, and I, and I understand that in terms of, uh, you had asked me to take that down because I needed to get council approval. So how does that fit into here? And why am I being asked or, why, why, in other words, why can't I use, we use that platform, which parents really actually celebrated because they could do that in an anonymous space without worrying about retribution and sort of like, and, and actually engaging with each other. Um, and so how does that fit here? And why is it that, you know, that can't be used? Does that fit into this frame that we're discussing today or is that a separate issue? I just wanted, you know.
Alan, I'm sorry, can you clarify? What did you use? Where did you put it? Who asked you to take it down?
Sorry, Vito, just one second. I'll, I'll answer, I'll, I'll answer Alan quickly and that'll get to your question. Um, separate issue, but Alan, I was gonna give you the opportunity to introduce it. So I, I just wanna wrap up the draft policies, which I'm about to do, but I'm more than happy to give you the opportunity and you've just sort of introduced it, but it needs to be.
So what, what are our next steps?
Yes, exactly. On the social media policies, um, the, um, you know, I, I have a lot to go, I think we all, three of us have a lot to go back with and I think there's some good stuff we can do and we're gonna reconvene, we're gonna edit, we'll work over email. And I think, um, you know, the next step will be bring something to the March meeting. And what that looks like will, in a lot of ways, depend on what happens in succeeding days. But, um, like I said, I think this has been really helpful. And I'll just, I just wanted to share one. We, we saw an example, one example of a bylaw, a social media in the bylaws policy was District Thirty-Two. And it's very succinct. It's, it, we, we can sort of go a lot of different ways with this, but I was just, I've been thinking about, do we put a, you know, two pages of social media stuff in there, or do we do a sort of a more succinct version and they have one paragraph? And basically, the, the most important point, and I'll just read it verbatim, is when there are posts that are not related to Community School District Thirty-Two, the administrative assistant can post only if given permission and grant consent by the council to do so, not the president. And so that's one of the key concepts that we've been talking about. And I think i- if we were to suggest a version included in the bylaws, that's the kind of thing that I think should go there. So just sharing that as sort of a final observation.
Can I, um, say that's a, yeah, like that would be something that I think would be reasonable. And, um, can I also just, because it is a District Twenty, um, and Black History Month is almost over, there were some resources that I know were given out by the, by the DOE that are on our website. I'd love for them to also go on the Facebook page. I'm wondering if that is something that.
Alice, I, I posted it and forwarded it to you, remember?
No, but on the Facebook page?
Yeah, and I, cause I, the email I.
I don't do Facebook that much and I did see it was on the website. I just didn't know, because I know that's social media, right? Not, that's what we're talking about here. So I didn't know if we were distinguishing, but I'm happy to hear that.
I wanted you to know I did that, Alice.
Yay, thank you, everyone. Black History Month, only a few more days. All right, Alan, you're next.
So anyway, but in, so officially on this particular topic, social media policies, which was scheduled for the meeting, I think we're done. Alan, I know wants to introduce this other topic and it's the, the bylaws state we have to approve. All members present have to approve introduction of another topic at the special meeting. It's just the way the bylaws are written. So, um, at this point, I guess, Alan, you may clear you wanna discuss this. So do we have consent of all members present to sort of hear out Alan's?
Are we, are we still voting on the website, on the website, um, fees?
Oh, that's, that, that was a budget item. Yeah, I mean.
Reimbursement.
Didn't we, didn't we basically get approval from Anne Marie to?
Oh, it has to be, it has to be vote, right?
You're right, Adele, you're right.
Oh, gosh.
We, we should have done that with the budget stuff.
Yeah, I, sorry, um, yeah, I didn't think it had to be voted on. I thought she said.
We're, we're a little worried. Anne Marie was saying that we had to have the approval of the council.
What are we talking about?
Oh, I, I, I will explain, Alice. Um, I just, i- i- can we, can we forward?
Go ahead.
It's, it has to do with the Arts Festival, Alice.
Aren't you being reimbursed?
No, that's what we're worried about unless we cross our Ts.
So we still don't know if Wix is a vendor?
So Wix is not a vendor.
So you're.
But according to Anne Marie, may I speak, uh, may I, may I, may I go forward with this? So, uh, so they did provide a vendor, which is the website that is a vendor. It's a very utilitarian website, which I didn't feel was, um, colorful in a sense. I can show, would you like, um, Natalia, do I have, uh, do I have the option of presenting? Share screen, I do. This will stop. May I, may I present, Natalia? Yes, I'm gonna go for it. Okay, so, um, I'll just show you really quickly, I think. Uh, it's loading up right now. Um, so, so I wanted to use Wix. So Wix is a little more, um, user-friendly and it's easy to maneuver and it's colorful and it has nice templates. Um, the problem is Wix is not a vendor. And it was, um, so I'm, I'm loading it up right now. It might take a second just because I have a thousand tabs open right now. Uh, so the, no, so I'm sorry, say again, Simeon.
Find out what we're voting on.
So the point of what we're voting on, and so I don't know if you recollect, but previously, who, who was it? Was it Eugene? Eugene had previously paid for our website domain and he paid three, three hundred dollars to renew our website domain. But because it wasn't, uh, an approved vendor, they wouldn't pay for it.
That's not what it was.
Oh, was, what was it for, Alice? Tell me.
Two twenty-seven and he paid out of his pocket because we didn't have an AA and we couldn't spend money at that time. The problem why he couldn't be reimbursed is because it wasn't separated. If he had been billed one hundred and twenty-five dollars and then one hundred and two dollars, he could have been reimbursed because a hundred and twenty-five dollars is the maximum council member reimbursement. So he got a reimbursement for the lesser amount, which I believe was like ninety-nine dollars. They wouldn't process the larger amount. I don't know why, whatever. Um, that's how it broke down. So that's why I was thinking with Wix, if you could have them bill you two months and then two months, you would be reimbursed, no problem. I don't, I mean, I don't know how much it is, I, operating on a fifty-dollar number, but.
It's real, yeah, so it's, it's really not much.
Right.
It's really, it's really not much at all. Um, Al, um, Alice, Natalia, do you think that's a problem?
So it might be easier to do it that way than to do all of this, you know what I mean? But you would have to talk to Wix and see if they would be able to bill you.
No, they can't bill me. It, it, no, they can't bill me. I'd have to pay for it and get reimbursed.
Yeah, yes, yes, but they, in, like, you buy two months and then two months. You make two separate payments under a hundred and twenty-five dollars so that you can be reimbursed. You not reimbursed because of the vendor issue. He was not reimbursed because it was over a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Believe me, I spent months on this.
So, so I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, I went through emails from Face. Um, I specifically asked, uh, Anne Marie to clarify whether you could be reimbursed for fifty dollars. And she said yes. That I could not find an email that specifically stated we have to vote on anything. Um, I think if you want us to vote, I can put a motion in, you know, for, for a vote that, um, we agreed to use Wix. And, you know, a motion that, you know, the, you, Adele, will put in as a monthly reimbursement of fifty dollars, uh, you know.
Yeah, yeah, nothing like, you know how well I am at cashing, but Natalia, help me out. Am I dreaming? Steve, did I see something that said we needed a line vote on this?
Only if it's a budget item. I'm sorry to keep interrupting, but if you're being reimbursed.
No, 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 this is, no, this is. No, literally, but this is something she said. And Natalia, do you remember her saying this in the last two weeks?
No, it's so.
So.
Once you say you can be reimbursed, I don't remember her saying that needs to be voted on.
Yeah, Adele.
I feel that it kinda should be since, oh, this will be the council who's hosting it. And that's how it's being presented.
But since you're not using a DOE vendor, it, instead of going through all of this rigmarole. But again, so two, two things here. You need to talk to Wix and make sure that they can bill you under a hundred. Like, I don't know what the total is gonna be for the four months, but.
Oh, you can do, you can do a monthly, you can do a monthly. The thing is.
So the question is, can you be reimbursed for the June month on when, whenever the bill comes in? So the question is, can you be reimbursed for the June month on whenever the bill comes in? Because you need to submit that by some date. I don't know what that is, Natalia. The other question is, um, it fell out of my head because I'm old too. So, but we definitely don't need to vote.
Steve?
But we have, March is the budget deadline. We can address this on March.
Well, this is the problem. So wait a second, Steve.
Go ahead, Adele, yes.
Steve, though.
Yep.
This came up. I know you, I'm not dreaming on this.
I'm looking at.
When I started saying.
Yeah, Adele.
Based on Anne Marie.
You sent an email asking if there needs to be a vote. You sent that email. I'm looking at it. She responded asking if they're a DOE vendor. You got the tax AD that was sent over to her. She checked the website.
It's not.
She checked, she said they're not. And then she said you can put in a month for monthly reimbursement. That's what she said. I then responded and said, just to clarify, is the only thing that needs to be done is for Adele to submit a monthly reimbursement for $50? And she said yes. So unless there was some phone conversation that I wasn't privy to from a perspective of what's written in email from Anne Marie, you know, no indication of vote.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking this through. And I can, I can submit all the way up through June?
Natalia, what's the last date you can submit, Natalia? June 30th?
Yeah, from my understanding, you can submit up until the last day of the term.
Great.
And I can do, then technically, I can do, if it's, say I get a discount and it's $25 a $25 a month, if it's 50% off, I can submit three months in one month. It doesn't, that doesn't matter as long as it's within my monthly.
And if you're going to claim internet reimbursement, it still needs to be under.
Within that.
A hundred and twenty-five a month. You can spend that however you want. If you're also planning on getting reimbursed for internet, your claim for the Wix needs to be within the $125.
So there is one other.
Hey, guys. Hey, guys. I have to interrupt. I'm sorry. This is, I think we've said enough on this topic right now.
I'm sorry, Steve, there's one other thing. We need to up the Google Drive. Our storage on Google Drive, Natalia, somehow needs to spend $30 to up our yearly Google Drive storage so that schools can submit their artwork.
Is that a budget? That's a budget item, Adele?
It should, yeah, it should fit. It's only $30.
So then we just have to make two votes on two budget items. I mean.
Well, it should fit. I mean, it should be under something.
And can I just use my credit card to Google and then be reimbursed?
I don't know, Natalia?
But I'd be happy to.
Yeah, as long as you just send me the receipt.
I'd have, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Email me tomorrow. Let me know what you need.
So these do not require reimbursement, right? What we've talked about per.
These are reimbursement. Alice is gonna get reimbursed. I'll get reimbursed.
I'm sorry.
Correct. Okay, all right, carry on. And this is the beginning of the website. This is why we like Wix. It's, it's prettier. So, and then it drops down and then it is.
I hope that's a stock photo and that we're.
That's a, that will all change. We'll have quotes from the kids. And then it drops down into pre-K through K through five, then go into music and it gives a whole page on that.
The kids will have signed a waiver and all.
Yes, we have the waivers. We went through all of that today. I have the actual permission slips and all that fun stuff.
Yeah.
So Alice, I guess I will definitely let you know when we get, but we're gonna launch it in March. And hopefully, and if you want to help me upload some stuff to the website, by all means, I'd be really happy to.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, are the parents directly emailing you or that?
No, it's going direct. We are, we are not touching this. This way we can validate who they are. And, yeah, and it's going, they're going to upload to our setup Google Drives. So that, and then we can access it from there. But it's their responsibility to make sure that the permission slips are on file. So we don't have to deal with that.
Thanks, Adele.
Okay, all right. Thank you, everyone.
We're good on any budget-related items, Adele, right?
I, I hope so.
I read the same email, Inga just, it sounds pretty cool to me.
Yeah, I'd like to move then that we discuss the topic of the Padlet at the committee meeting.
Yeah, sure. And like I said a few minutes ago, there was, we need 10, we need everyone to agree. So let's go around the horn. I guess we want to do a roll call.
Sorry, what do we?
What we're discussing?
Yes, that's fine. To introduce, just first of all, on the bylaws, to introduce the new topic at a special meeting, it requires the consent of all members present. We are discussing a, it was a Padlet site that was established for the Special Education Committee meeting on Monday. I asked Alan to either take it down or make it clear that it was not associated with the CEC because it hadn't been approved yet. Just based on the principle that committees, unless it's approved, don't set up their own social media platforms. So that's how, that's the conversation. And that's what we could discuss.
And I'm sorry, this is a very simple question. What is a Padlet site? What does this mean? What is a Padlet?
Sorry, Inga, don't we have to decide that we want to discuss it in?
We have to know what we're discussing.
Yeah.
I have to understand what I'm discussing. Unless you want to wait while I Google this to figure out.
I mean, to some extent, guys, we don't have to, I mean, you can either say yes or no and we can hear it. And I'm gonna, I mean, I don't think we have to spend an hour on it. But I think that's the issue as I've outlined it. We can just, I think we can move into discussion if you want or you don't want. I'm happy to spend a few minutes on it. So consider me a yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
I mean, I'd like to know what this is first. I'm shocked that no one can just.
I think it's like a Discord platform.
It's like a comments website. You post comments.
Okay. Thanks, very helpful. Okay. Great. Yeah, I'm fine with discussing it.
Okay. Alan, do you want to sort of reiterate your, your position?
Yeah, I, I used it and I, I brought in, I consulted with colleagues who helped co-moderate the meeting in terms of providing a space, a wall. And to answer your questions, Inga, what it does, it allows parents to, in their, actually their home language to, and when you click in, you actually can post. So what we did, it was, it was kind of like what teachers, actually teachers in DOE use it. And what, and oh, there's a link in the, in the chat that, that, that tells us what it is. And it was a really colorful wall where folks can provide, parents can provide their concerns, their struggles, their issues regarding special ed to IEP. And it was quite beautiful and it still exists. And one of the things we, the reason why we used it was to identify problems that we may have been overlooking in many cases, right? What people posted are things that we've talked about all year and other things are like, oh, we didn't consider that. That, and then Alice and Simeon co-moderated, Alice did the, did the work here. Thank you for that. To talk about sort of solutions that we could use. So it was basically a mechanism to allow parents to do, to post their concerns regarding IEP, special ed in anonymity. Because we're talking about sensitive subjects here, right? And we talked early tonight about not personalizing things and we're talking about also legal sensitivities as well. I think someone's sharing their screen. Okay, thank you for that. And so I was, parents really enjoyed it because it generated discussion. I don't, didn't think I did anything wrong. And then I got an email. Stephen, if you want it, by all means, I'm explaining myself. You can complain yourself that I was asked to take it down. And yet we've got a really nice record of, of parents voicing their concerns to the community regarding D75 to IEP issues. And by the way, when you post on it, you can also like or heart it without anyone knowing who you are. And that allowed us to understand what's on people's minds. So for example, parents are still pissed that they have to go outside the district for their D70, that their kids are on buses all day when, if they're in school in another district. And we've talked about that as a council. There's other issues, there are other issues raised on there. So Stephen, if you want to explain why it is that, I don't understand why, for a committee meeting when we have this autonomy, why I need to go get approval for something that was simply a learning tool and gave parents, you know, you know, it was a bit of democracy we're being practiced here, allowed parents input into a process. I'm not sure why the hierarchy and why I need to go to you or whoever. I'm really stunned by that. So I just want to know why.
So please, can I just ask for clarification before we discuss it? Because I think some of us are out of the loop here. Where was it posted that you were asked to take it down?
Well, here's the, it's its own website, Vito. And look, I mean, I'm gonna, my position on this is pretty simple, really. It's, it simply has to do with the fact that committees, the committees, CEC committees, it's not in their purview to post their own social media platforms, plain and simple. And it's nothing to do.
Something that says they can't?
There's, there's, let me just finish what I'm saying. There's, there's nothing, it's literally nothing to do with everything Alan was saying. I certainly agree with the need to raise issues and raise voices and have parents feel safe speaking. It's, it's simply a matter of, you know, CECs are, you know, councils that are, you know, we attempt to come together on issues and have common platforms. We don't always agree and that's fine. But a committee structure is designed to be subordinate and work with, within a CEC and using CEC's official channels. And all decisions made by us, by a, all decisions.
The committee meeting in question was open to the public. And the public then had access to a link to go and put it there. They could have put it in the chat. We use this as a separate tool. Why is this an issue?
Why is it, for the exact reason I just said, because it was the committee committee doing something that had an external impact. For sure. If you're posting something online and I see moments in the chat about it's not being social media, it's not a website. And to be honest, I've never used Padlet. So until a few weeks ago, so I don't, I don't know how we draw the line there. But in my mind, Padlet is something that, it's a communications device. It's a URL link. It has an external facing source. And that's certainly something that should be subject to CEC approval. A committee cannot act unilaterally on that. You can certainly think of the consequences if it's an issue that, if it's a committee that perhaps you didn't agree with. What if we had put the social media policies up on a, on a site or done something sort of just on a committee basis?
So, may I ask a question?
That's fine. Yeah, go ahead, Adele.
So if I understand, and I put this up just so, because I didn't, I didn't know about it. Two things. I'm just curious from a understanding standpoint. How, how did you understand people speaking in other languages? They were posting in their own languages? And how did you understand them? Or was it?
It translates built into it, I believe.
It was translate, it was built into it. Okay, that's good. And the other thing was, is it automatically set to public or do you, how was it set? In other words, what is the criteria for the setting? I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear.
I'm not even aware. I, Alan.
It says you choose from five options, public, secret, password protective, which those, everything past public is problematic for, obviously for our body. Secret passwords, so totally private, private organization-wide. As open meeting laws, I'm assuming you had it set to public?
Okay, can I?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Alice. I'm just trying to understand.
No, 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 no. Of course, of, of course it was being shared as a screen because people were writing on it. You could link to it and then when the results were in, we had time to write, or not me, but parents had time to write their concerns, their questions, whatever they wanted to say anonymously is really very important because you cannot do that in a chat. And then when the time was up, Alan went through some of them and they were definitely not policies, Steve. I gotta push back on that. They were parent concerns, which was, which was, which was the point of this introductory IEP committee because in the past, what has happened or what parents have, what I heard them say at this Monday meeting is that they have been spoken at, at all, at, at, at a lot of their individual meetings with administration and parents. But also in a larger sense, when we address the issue, we're doing it through a town hall and a separate thing instead of taking them as they are at every meeting as members of our community and really hearing them and trusting their expertise when it comes to their own children, which I think is something as parents we all struggle with. But I mean, I imagine and I have heard from Monday's comments that it's a huge concern in, in this community in our district. And so their ability to write this anonymously was, you know, I can't even quantify it. It was amazing. There was, there was real discourse and it's not public in my understanding. It was public because it was exposed during our open meeting, but you needed to have that link and I could be understanding it wrong, but I mean, I don't know. I don't know what the difference is between
Okay.
having this Padlet and also having social media policy presented to the public, either.
I know you're advocating. I get it. I'm not saying this from a negative standpoint. I just want to know.
Thing. I'm not done, Adele. For me.
Yeah, but I was still speaking. I was just trying to understand.
I'm just gonna cut, I want to cut this off. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but I want to move on. Inga's had her hand up and then Deena. Inga, are you, do you still want to say something?
Yeah, I mean, I honestly, I guess, you know, the, the fact that many council members don't even know or understand what this external, I'm gonna call it a website, even though I see people are saying it's not a website, is, I think for me, that's troubling, right? That indicates at a minimum, like council members should have been at least, you know, told or it should have been, you know, kind of what, known to everyone before it was implemented that, hey, we're thinking of doing this, this is what it is. You know, any, any issues, just, just something like that. I think that would have been a good way forward. I think it sounds great, but frankly, again, anything that we're using with, to engage in our parents, I think we just also should always ensure that the parents are parents of children in District 20. I don't know if that was done initially and then there was anonymity to commentary. But I think that's very important for, for anything the council does in terms of, you know, taking on comments from, from various activities that engage the community. That's all I have.
Great, thank you, Inga. Deena, do you want to speak?
No, I just, I posted my, my comment in the chat just to say that I think the fact that this was a virtual meeting, because everything has to be virtual, sort of muddles the true intent of it. It's not an announcement or a, you know, a public posting or anything that, you know, is, is a statement of the council. It is as if there was a Dropbox at a meeting and people were putting in comments and questions anonymously. And I think if we can look at it that way, it helps us understand, you know, how we're trying to use this virtual space to continue to do our work properly. That said, I have to leave. I'm so sorry to have to leave the meeting early and I'm sorry to miss the public speaking session. I don't know for voting on anything, but.
Alan, Deena, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. And then I want to see speaking, I think, Vito, go ahead, Vito.
So I just, I apologize for my ignorance. It seems to me that it was used as an exercise. And we use it as an exercise and put it up there. And my only, and if it was, it's still part of the meeting. It was recorded. The Padlet should be still up there. So then anything we did with that at that point should be fine, right? We could comment to it, but it shouldn't be allowed to live beyond the actual meeting. And I still haven't gotten a clear answer if it, if it does. Is it alive right now? Can someone still post on it? Alan, can you tell me?
I wrote that question as well in the chat. Can parents still write on it?
So, so in response to Stephen's email, I, you're allowed to remake it. So I remade it. So people cannot, can no longer post on it. It can be closed at any time, but it's archived. And the parents' voices are there and I'm gonna keep them out, out there. I feel like, look, you're making, this council's making a great case to keep it. I don't think you realize.
I don't think anyone's attacking you. I just.
No, you know, we actually agreed, but we're, but it can be closed anytime. And the, you know, the, the original link was changed because of this. I think I folded pretty, I compromised and I shouldn't have done that. And I'm mad at myself for that because everything that I've heard right now is making a strong case as to why disability parents should no longer be silenced. Like, I see Alice's hand is up. I'm just really floored by this. It felt very like micromanaged. It felt sort of like, I felt like I was getting, you know, my, 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 my wrist lapped. And, and I, and after a whole year and a half of IEP parents feeling like the district doesn't listen to them, I really can't believe we're having this conversation over this. I'm stunned.
I don't think it has anything to do with IEP parents in particular. I think it's the broader, it's the broader purpose of this. I don't really, I don't think anybody's attacking anybody or specifically about anything. It's what is the purpose of that? It's what is the purpose of the Padlet? And I think we've decided what it is. And I think we just have to decide on the life of it, which I would recommend the end of the meeting. And then, sure, it's a great tool to use at any time. But is that, is that, is that an accurate recap, both Alan of what you would like to do and Steve of your concerns?
Yeah, I think that's fair. It's just confusion around, like, like Steve Weiser just posted in the chat, just confusion about what it is, how it works, the URL it uses. Is it public? Is it not public? Is it limited to just parents that it's sent to? Just these issues just needed to be fleshed out a little bit, I think.
Steve, may I, just giving an analogy to this. So we have, we have this platform, which, you know, again, this is, we need to be educated on it. And first of all, how do we know these are parents in our district? But let's take Discord, obviously, the teenager, the young people's vehicle. If we were to use Discord in our Discord, you're cringing, Al. Discord is, you know, it's a very, very useful platform for communication, which a lot of people use, but it has the potential for reaching a very wide, a much wider audience than you might anticipate. Is that potential exists here? In other words, how is this accessed? How is it accessed? Again, Alan, I hope you don't take this from the, the perspective of attack. It's not. It's, it's just trying to bring knowledge of the platform to our council. So in other words, so how do you know who is on this? And mind you, of course, we don't know who's on our Zoom meetings necessarily. It could be anybody based upon how they sign in. But based on Padlet, how is that, that link distributed? And how then do people, like, can any, is that, is it widely distributed? Does it go, the URL, is it posted somewhere on the web? Or so, how, how, how did that information get disseminated? Alan, the faces, I love the faces. It's, you know, when people ask for, when people ask for education, and I really feel, I would ask that we continue to be professional in this. Stephen, Stephen is asking only that we all understand the platforms that we're using. And I, I hope that we can appreciate that, that if somebody doesn't have that technological literacy or they have a concern that they're coming from a perspective, that maybe they have the right to have that perspective. Yes, Alice?
I'm sorry that the face gives me away, Adele. It's just that we answered this already, so it's just, I'm wondering. Okay, the Padlet link was posted in the chat of the meeting. Alan asked for comments at two separate points, gave parents time to reply in it. If the URL can be closed at any time, I don't understand why this conversation is even being continued to this point. Padlet is seemingly, and it was my first experience with it on Monday night, but it was an extremely simple piece of software. I encourage anyone to follow the link that Francine posted. Thank you, Francine. And go look at it. If it can be closed at any time, all it really is is an anonymous comment form for parents, which by the way, got the Zoom link from their PTAs, from their parent coordinators, from our CEC meetings. I mean, if we think that people are hanging out, watching CEC meetings, commenting on, I mean, maybe, maybe, but I, I, I think that that's a far cry, okay? And if it happens, I think we'll deal with it when it happens.
You know, Alice-
Make a motion to see-
All right.
You know, also I was, I would just keep talking if I may, Adele, because I'm not done speaking. The real issue is, do we want to make a motion to vote to be able to use the Padlet at the committee? Because the way I understand Steve's objection is that we just need the council to approve it. And it's already something that is used by the DOE and teachers all the time to get input from their students.
Okay, for the sake of our meeting, I'm sorry, Steve, may I speak?
And you keep-
Just one, one last, one last statement, because it's for the, we just came off of that meeting. The irony, Alice, is I was, I was for this platform, but, but you, but no. But you take it from a position of attack and, and, and that's-
Can you explain that to me? Why did I disagree?
Adele and Alice, please, I don't want-
I just, I appreciate-
It's out of control at this point.
A consideration of tone, a consideration of tone.
Right, well, I-
I absolutely, by all means, let's, let's move to-
Maybe you could not interrupt me anymore.
We're moving on, we're moving on. I will, I do like, yeah, use the mute. I agree. Steve Weiser, can you speak, please?
Yeah, hi. Hi, everyone. So I'm gonna give some further context on the situation, right? I think what the problem was, is that it seemed to some members like that a external website was created for a committee. A committee wouldn't be able to make an external website without the vote of the council. But it seems like this Padlet is not an external website, right? It is just a tool that you can use during a meeting. So it seems to just be a misunderstanding of what the tool is, what the URL was, how it was to be used. And I think there's just some confusion and miscommunication about what happened, right? It does seem like most members are fine with it being used exactly how you described it to be used. And so this may actually just be a non-issue that came up because of miscommunication.
You have a technologically relatively unsavvy CEC president who's never used Padlet, as I said, so it was new to me.
Yeah, so there might not actually be an issue. So I mean, like, if people are fine with it being used as a tool, I think, and I think it's just when it comes to creating external things, it's something the council itself would have to vote on. But from the explanation, I mean, you all can decide, but it doesn't really seem like you'd have to vote on something like this as a tool for a meeting.
And I guess we've, we've had a really sort of heated discussion and I apologize, but I haven't been able to follow everything that's gone back and forth about it, but have we, is it, I guess I would just like to see that it's, it really is, is there something in, on the website that describes? And I saw Natalia put the website up earlier, but I haven't had time to read it, but just verification that it's, it's sort of a meeting tool. And it doesn't, you know, it can't be searched and found and it's not external facing and, and all that stuff. I would just like to verify that and then I'm happy to vote on it.
I don't think we need to, I agree.
I think, Steve, the only thing is if it's set from public to private. If it's a public meeting, the question is whether or not someone would set it to private, which obviously nobody in this meeting, this council would. But if we wanted to vote that if it is used, that it must be on a public, public setting. Private seems to connotate that it's some, only, there's a secret setting. It connotates that only certain people can see it. And if it's an open meeting, then maybe that, and I don't know enough about it, Alan, you could tell me if that's accurate. And if this meeting, if it's set to public, then that may be, then that's fine. I'm, I'm fine with that. But that should be specified.
Yeah, public for the length of the meeting.
Say again, I'm sorry, Vito?
Public for the length of the meeting and then it closes. And then we had the tool and then we used it and then it's part of the record and I think that's fine. I don't, I don't think we even need to vote. That's, just discuss it. I don't think there's anything to vote on. If Alan wants to use another tool down the road or Vito wants to use a tool and we're using it for that meeting and then it's over, sure, why not? I mean, I think we should be allowed to be creative without having to. I agree with Alan, sir, that, and I don't think we necessarily, as long as we go on those parameters where it's just for a particular meeting and it's a tool that we want to introduce, I, I don't think that we need to run everything by everybody.
Agreed.
I, we're all adults, I think, right?
And well, as said, Alan mentioned he was going to use this tool in the, in, to me and Simeon at least. Steve, I believe you were copied on that. Those are the council members that he knew would be attending the meeting. So we had RSVP'd and he gave us a little rundown. I mean, maybe you-
I was not copied on that.
Okay, well, I'm sure that was just an oversight. I was, a few people that he knew were going to be there. I know I was on it and Rob was on it and Simeon was on it because we had RSVP'd. Obviously, you're a de facto member of all committees, Steve, as president, so, you know, we'll be more careful in the future.
I mean, to be honest, I RSVP'd too and I didn't get a link, but I-
Okay, well, Alan, then I just threw you under the bus. I'm sorry, buddy, but, um.
I thought that-
I agree with you, Vito. I think we should make a motion to just vote.
I thought everybody got a, got an invite to the meeting via Natalia and I, I'm a little confused about this last part. And I thought everyone knew about it and we posted on the webpage and-
No, 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 not, not the flyer. I'm just saying that you wrote a little email about, because you were asking for Simeon and my help to facilitate. So you said that you were going to use the Padlet in that email. I thought Steve was copied. That's all.
I agree with Vito. I don't think we need to vote. I don't think you want to stifle creativity. I think it's a good platform. It's, the, the language, the language users in particular, being able to include them. My only concern is obviously with anything, you know, how do we know who they are? But you know what? It's a great platform for the particulars of the meeting. And it's, it's definitely creative, absolutely. It's, you know, to be applauded, I think.
Well, with that, it sounds like we can adjourn. Is that the last item, right? We're good to-
It's almost like a-
Public speaking, Alice. Natalia's shaking her head.
Public speaking.
Public speaking.
Of course, our public, my favorite. How could I forget?
So with that, we will begin the public speaking session. I feel like there are exactly two members of the public here and they all know how this works. They both know how this works. And so-
No one, no one signed up, so it's a free for all.
Okay. Francine, Paulette, would either of you like to speak? I see Paulette would. So can you unmute Paulette, Natalia?
She should be able to unmute, because for me, it says asked to unmute.
Can you hear me? Yes. I have to say, I'm incredibly offended that the question of whether these parents that came to the Monday meeting were parents from D-20 is under speculation. We've had meetings as large as, what, 200 people with people outside of the district and no one has ever said a word. But when it comes to our IEP parents, which showed up in droves, there was over 42 people on that meeting. And they came with hands out, asking for help and were being told, go talk to your principal. You don't think these parents have already spoken to their principal before coming to this meeting? It was, the meeting itself was disingenuous. And then to hear at this particular special meeting on the same night as the pep, no surprise, that there is doubt whether these parents came from this district is incredibly offensive. That's all I have to say. I actually have to say more, but I'm actually too angry to, to put it into words right now.
Thank you, Paulette. Francine?
Yeah, I can't pass up an opportunity to speak to you all. You know, I, I'm a little more baffled than, and maybe not so surprised compared to Paulette, although I do agree with what she said. It was just interesting to me to hear this conversation about the Padlet on the heels of the conversation about the social media platform. And I thought Alice's point earlier about the number of people on social media was actually really relevant. And I keep hearing sort of two conflicting messages, somehow that there are these points of engagement, but also this incredible fear or reluctance to truly engage us because we don't agree with everything you say, right? We don't agree with a lot of the things that the district does. We have complaints, we have comments, we have concerns. And I don't know that if it's intentional or not, but there is a real feeling of really trying to just control our voices and the narrative. And I have to say, this is the first CEC meeting I've been to in probably a year that the chat is even open. And so to have that social media conversation, which really didn't feel like a truthful, truthfully intending to engage the public, because as a member of the public, I don't see where those points of engagement are. We can't actually post on the Facebook page. We can only respond to things that you post. So I don't actually know what we're supposed to do to engage, right? When we speak at the public speaking portions of the meetings, it's just like this. Things happen, we talk, we say angry things, we say not angry things, we say, we say concerned things, but it's not a conversation. We just say a bunch of stuff and then you guys vote, however you're going to vote, based on what your own personal experiences are. And the Padlet conversation was a beautiful example of that. You had a bunch of people saying, I don't know what this is. I've never used it. And then you had a bunch of people saying, we know exactly what it is. We totally use it. Here is what it is. And you just spent a half an hour saying, but what is it? I mean, I, I don't know. So I actually think this was valuable and really illustrative of a really fundamental problem with the CEC and its relationship to the public. And I think you should kind of go back and watch this again and think about what it feels like to be a parent sitting in on this and listening to this. And then imagine this is a different issue like Black Lives Matter or special education and it goes exactly like this. That's all I'll say.
Thanks, Francine. I'm assuming that's all the people remaining in the public. Yes. Okay, so with that, I think we can adjourn. Is that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to adjourn.
Is there a second?
A second.
And all in favor? Aye. Is anyone opposed?
No.
Great. Thanks, everyone, for showing up tonight. Appreciate it.
Night, everybody. Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Marching in six o'clock. See you there.
Night.
Night.
Thank you, Natalia.
You're welcome.
As always, great job.
This member, I'm off Monday.
Okay, we'll leave you alone.